Welcome everyone to the Willford 3D School District Board Meeting, Wednesday, January 11th, 2023. The mission of the Willford 3D School District is to provide continual progress, the improvement of one's abilities, the expansion of one's interests and knowledge in the growth of one's character. Call the order of rule, call this Joy.
Kim Barrett. Lynda Duncan.
Here.
Tom Spencer.
Here.
Rob Metzger.
Kara Oyn.
Here. All right, thank you. Joy, agenda approval. Was there any additions, changes, or corrections, Mr. Boardman?
No, I have none.
All right. All those in there, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All right, we'll go to the minutes approval. We do them all at once. So we have the December 14th district calendar hearing and the December 14th regular meeting. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All right, we have public forum.
Yes, I'm very excited to have Mr. Sippy, Mr. Day, Perry Hartman, series on the advisory council, and we've also got several students coming in front of you tonight, so they want to share some of the things they have going on. And it's an exciting time with our FFA program. Contest are coming up too. When are the contests starting? In February?
Well technically we're now, but they aren't, he's gonna go over when they're...
Okay, I don't wanna take your confidence, so well, thank you for coming tonight.
Yes.
Real sure.
All right, so as you can see on the papers that Mr. Sippy is passing out, we have a very active chapter, especially Stacy's why. Each activity has been listed and student involvement is in parentheses at the end. We started with our 2021-2022 school year debate on the lecture accomplishments. From that point, our biggest events have been the Farm Program Show, Friday C Day, and Fruit Sales Peace Lunch. One of the chapter's most memorable trips was National Convention where we had multiple tours and endless FFA experiences. We were able to take tours that helped diversify our ag knowledge. We started by touring the Western Illinois Ag Program, then proceeded to go to a dairy and swine farm tour where we got to see one of Fairlife's dairy farms. After that, we got to tour Clayborne Farms where we learned about forest breeding and penis race horses. And we finished off our tours with the Louisville Slugger Museum where we got to venture into the forest history.
Hey, real quick, before we do that, why don't you guys go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Thank you.
What school you're from, first and last name, please, and just a little louder for the audience.
I'm J.C. Weeks, I'm from Drake.
I'm Auguste, I'm from Oregon.
I'm Katarak, I'm from Durant.
I'm Kaila Diddy, I'm from Alton.
Can we have the PD back here?
No, I'm Kaila Diddy and I'm from...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, come on in, Olivia.
All right.
We're gonna be talking about the livestock committee. There are seven students involved with the committee. All students involved either have raised COOP projects that have been active in the program. Our main goal is to make sure it is a learning experience while also being financially responsible. Currently, our committee is determined to options. FFA chapter funds the cost of the animal feed and shedding. Students will pay back the chapter with revenue option funding. FFA chapter will help bring costs down with bulk purchasing of animals, feed and bedding, but students cover all costs. We are sending out a student interest survey to help determine possible numbers for the 2023 show season.
We have a lot of upcoming events coming up. And at the end of the month, seven students will travel to the Capitol and meet with state legislators. Our members will be learning about the legislative process, discussing agricultural issues, and learning how to advocate for agriculture. Subdistrict contests are quickly approaching. Our members are working on speeches, projects to demonstrate at subdistricts. These events will help students to think critically and communicate efficiently. The teams or individuals that place top two will advance to districts. And lastly, our chapter is gearing up for a bake sale fundraiser. We're gonna do that at the Will and Durant basketball game in February. All the proceeds will go towards state protection causes. Also coming up is National Petting. National Petting will be February 18th to 25th. This week is designed for FFA chapters throughout the country to celebrate the organization and its numbers. Our chapter will be celebrated with the following activities. Contest review, review night, parents, committee members are welcome to come watch change performance for the district contest. Student staff dress updates throughout the week. Elementary school coloring contest, best in show mola contest, staff appreciation breakfast at Durant and Winton. And our next week will be the fruit, fruit sales high schools, high school speed trip.
Um, have any questions for them?
You expect us to mold contests?
That's a great idea.
There's a few around, I think, so.
They give a big ribbon.
That's in show.
That's right.
That's right.
If you have any questions for them, I think Olivia and I will have a few things to say, so you guys are good.
Before they go, congratulations on your fruit sales. We got the numbers last meeting. That is fantastic. You guys absolutely rocked it, so congratulations.
We have about thirty that sold over three hundred and fifty each, so that's pretty impressive.
And some of them were way over that, within the thousands or a couple of thousands, so we greatly appreciate that. Thanks, guys, if you want to have some good work. So for those of you guys that I haven't met before, my name's Josh Day, and it'll be so good to see you guys probably through that out by now, so you can see some of their faces. There's a couple sheets that we passed out. One of them is kind of the future of the program, and we just wanted to, on the one that has everything jacked in the bottom right-hand corner, if you were following along anyway there. Which the first thing on that is our course offerings. Olivia and I worked on that a little bit over the summer, and we're still continuing to kind of tweak that. We have some ideas there, but those are just some different pathways that we have. Every student, seventh and eighth grade takes that exploratory, and so for both seventh and eighth grades, so that's a different curriculum. And then moving into freshman is where you see kind of that blue bar that goes along the top of the page there, and then they go into the different pathways. So that's currently what we have to offer. We'll kind of tinker with that a little bit based off student need and demand and make sure that works for them.
We just want them to be thinking about what their eventual goal is instead of just taking ag classes at random, which is currently what's happening, is just throwing things in as they seem interesting. So we're just trying to get them to think, okay, what do you want to do in the future? Are you wanting to work specifically with plants, are you an all-animal person, are you kind of a blend? Do you want an all-inclusive opportunity? Then try to pick those classes according to a pathway that you're interested in post-high school. That's our goal, getting them to think about the future.
And then kind of not saying no. So every student that's in high school ag is an FFA member. We're affiliate dues-paying chapter, which means that anybody that's in an ag class is an FFA member. That doesn't mean that we expect them to participate in everything that we have, but it gives them the opportunity and, you know, get rid of that barrier as far as paying for dues. It's not a lot, but for some people, it's enough to cause that, so that's, we're benefit that, and that way we can talk to every student as opposed to just the FFA members. And I think that's really why we saw a good uptick of our focus. We asked everybody to participate, do what they get, so. Anything else on the course? The white sheet, the plain white sheet that you have there is just a list of our advisory committee meetings. I've noted Perry Hartman is here, he's one of our officers that's on there, but I think there's twenty or so individuals that we have that just started in November, I think, is that our first meeting?
Yeah, no, I thought it was December.
December. It was December.
So we're just getting started on that. We have eleven officers, and I'm just kind of putting some priorities together and see where the future takes us with that, and kind of our goals for the future, which is still kind of what we're talking about here, but some of the things we're talking about, greenhouse, what do we need to do on that? I know there's been some discussion. Unfortunately, we've been using it as part of the eighth grade curriculum and horticulture class. Besides class, we use it as a lab space, just for kind of safety, we can spread out a little bit, do some things in there. After, or during break, we ran into an issue where it got really cold over break. One of the heaters wasn't functioning and it killed what we had in there. Unfortunately, we didn't tend to spend a whole lot of money, and we can re-grow it and do those type of things, but since then, we kind of put a list together of some things that we need to work on, and we've got a few quotes, and actually we have insurance adjuster coming in tomorrow to look at the roof, because there's some hail damage on there that we noticed. I believe that might have been from that November storm, like right before, right at the beginning of November, so we'll see what they have to say, but we'll get the heater up and going, we'll try to seal up the north end with some rigid foam, just to try to keep the north breeze out of it, and then we'll see what we can do from there, so. I think the part for the heaters here, and there'll be some other tools and stuff in there, there's some stuff in there, but we'll need probably those instead of flats and heaters and some of those things. We bought some soil, just kind of get started, and that's what we're doing.
Yeah, our advisory committee is very, very passionate, specifically about every council and the COOP project as well, but they are really trying to help us get that up and running, so if we can do something this spring, as quick as we can, but the right way and all that kind of thing, so they're, they've been really helpful and are willing to chip in. And Clayborne, we've got two, so we're just trying to get it up and going.
And I know Mr. Crawford, or Andy Crawford, has met with you guys too, right?
Yep.
Yep, he's gone through a little bit of things. He has, we have a list of things that we think he thinks, he has a list of things that he thinks he can fix as well, as well as what he thinks he can manage given his current workload as well.
Exactly. And that's why I mentioned him, if he can't do it, we need to get it done in a little more source of energy.
So...
I mean, at this point, for a spring sale, time is of the essence, though.
It is. It's a key time.
So, yeah, so there's, there's a couple different things that, you know, depending on if money wasn't an issue, you know, there's, there's a pretty good number. We talked to Hummer down in Missouri, and they brought in an independent contractor to work and provide some suggestions, and we just got those numbers today, so we're gonna look through those and review what they have to say. A lot of what they have is only material or equipment, it's not labor, it's minimal, so I'll avoid making that in the second piece, so we can bring that passive change.
When is it too late for that agreement?
When is your...
That's an excellent question. Generally, like mid-February is pretty darn close for that, so. That doesn't mean that we can't still utilize class purposes, but to invest enough in seed and container and other materials, that's pretty much.
I will say this, we've wanted to be, I'll just be in something over the last seven years, and I certainly like to see it a hundred percent where we want it by mid-February, but that's not the case. Think big picture, and let's think about this in a year and a half window. Again, I know we can get something done this spring, but let's not rush it and not do it fully, but what we want, if we can't get it done by February 14th, that's all I'm saying, because that's a tight window.
Yeah, and there's some, like, the control panel, that's a safety concern, it's not, it's wide open to anybody in there, and we, that's just something casual that we're talking to students and it's just, it's too dangerous. And, but then, of course, there are, you know, these other things that, it's needed love for a while, and we're going to give it up now.
So we'll bring that list to you guys, you guys have that, and part of, part of what electricity, I guess, is what we're working on, the wiring inside greenhouse, is, could be potentially... You have water, some mix, and some of those things, so we're just trying to manage what we have, maybe by, in the short term, so that we can utilize it for that kind of look forward.
And you're thinking big picture, right? In five years, we want a facility that blends a classroom with a small livestock lab with a working functional mechanics lab and a greenhouse, so trying to figure out a way that all of that can be defined without sinking all of our money into a greenhouse, to just move it or change it, trying to figure out those things as well, so.
Mr. Hartman, you want to add something?
Can I talk?
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know if I have...
Yeah, no, you're...
Well, I know there was a time you had to hit your name on the itinerary, or you got...
Part of the ship, part of the crew.
Yeah. I think the important thing is, is it's unfortunate that we had, we started this in December. Our first meeting was that night. The entire committee went out there and looked at the facility and looked around, and, you know, we had concerns with storage and the classroom and so forth, we know that's something we look at in the future. We had concerns, we walk out there, anybody that had been in that greenhouse ten years ago, fifteen years ago, I mean, Devin Maxwell's got me. When I wrestled, I couldn't lose weight. We put bikes in the greenhouse, and we held them all the winter, and it was weight, so it was so tight, it didn't heat it well. So there's problems there. We walk, we take a look at it, we don't know until the next day, when myself, Devin Maxwell, and Andy walk in, and we look up, and we're like, well, no wonder we can't eat this thing, there's so many holes in the ceiling. So that's a major concern. Unfortunately, if we were to start this in September, we'd have been ahead, but you know what? The people that are on the committee are all farmers. We had two new advisors coming into the mix and saying, okay, where are we gonna go and so forth. So again, the Ag Advisory Board is saying, we feel that this is step one. We have somebody that has a lot of passion for it, we have, I say two different instructors. We have one that's really hands-on with livestock, we have one that's really hands-on with horticulture and crops and so forth, so we're looking at it both ways. What's the first bang to the buck? We know what we have to do at the farm. She's presenting programs of how big livestock kids should be showing. How do you determine, how do you determine what kids get what? A value of picks of your daughter's lamb versus, you know, a five-star versus a one-star? How do we determine what kid gets that? They're putting together a program that says participation, participation in the classroom, participation at the farm, participation in the greenhouse and so forth. So that's one step. But the most important step that we want to show with the investment from the community, the investment from the school board, administration, and the council fund, adding another instructor, what are we gonna get out of this? Where can we start first? We think that greenhouse is important, and we want that to happen, and we want, and again, we have five weeks. Can we do it? We have an insurance adjuster coming in, thank you for jumping on that very fast. That's very important to us. We're not here to make rules and all that, we're just here to help them try to figure out what the future is. With that said, Mr. O'Donnell brought up the controller. Junk, crap, twenty-five years old, can't get parts for it. Did he leave it empty again, please?
Hummer.
Hummer, Hummer reported a surprise. Instead of going with a Hummer controller, we made the phone call to custom builders, knowing that it's running fans, knowing it's running different things, and we said, what can we do? Because of where we live, with the amount of hog confinement around here, with Highland in our back door, which is the largest hatchery in the United States, what controllers can we bring in that these kids can have their hands on and understand when they walk out of this school when they're seniors, and they go out to a hog confinement, and they start having to change the settings once we get to July, and it's hot and all that, they understand how to walk their way through. So our recommendation is we go with something like that for the future. Save your money, it'd be twenty-two hundred dollars plus install. We know that we can wire it, the Ag Advisory Meeting, or meeting we had Monday night, we know that we can wire it, we'll have Andy there to wire it, but we want to bring in something like custom builders' chair up there. They'll check it for insurance purposes, we don't have an insurance guy here, we're claiming for a school burden now. So that's the one thing. So we're going fast forward, we've had a lot of meetings and so forth, what we can do to help this happen. I guess our point is, is Ag Advisory Board is, if the insurance adjuster comes, we run the math on the panels, okay? You're talking about eight thousand dollars, replace the panels for the ceiling. The point came up that we talked about, can the Ag Advisory Board, with some of these students, replace them? We talked with Sue about, Mr. O'Donnell, sorry, about that. And Jeff Graves did a basketball meeting last night, and he said, whenever you have a claim like this, they're probably gonna want it done professionally, not with a bunch of... And we get it, we totally understand that. So we have a five-week window, that we want to have this happen, we understand her ability, we understand it. But if we can get this done, and the insurance company comes back with, they give us fifty percent of what the roof is worth, what is the school, whose responsibility is to replace them? That's the question that the Ag Advisory Board, we don't know. We don't know who's responsible. Is it the Ag Department? Is it the school? Is this part of the school? That's our question, where are we gonna get the funds from?
It's part of the school, it's part of our facilities, anything that's under our roof or is a part of the school, even the ag farm, if something blew down out there, insurance been covered, then the school owns.
School, so that's, that's our concern. You know, we had, and the benefit of what we've had happen in the last six months, and I guess I will challenge a lot of you here. If you're, and I know some of you say no to social media, and I understand that, but if you're on social media, and you're on Facebook, and you have not liked the Willford FFA program, shame on you. Because the presentation that they did, my mom was sitting at home, and she knew what every kid from Willford Durant results were at the State Fair, what they posted on Facebook, and they had pictures of them. It was awesome to see. I have cousins in Illinois saying, good job to Emma, good job to this kid that won it. I mean, so it's elegant, please, please like that. The energy we have with these two advisors, and that's why we're so excited. The energy, the participation from these kids is wonderful. It is great, and I've been here a long time, and I've seen where we've gone, and I tell you what, I'm jealous, and my wife made a comment the other night, I sure wish we had these guys three or four years ago, when my daughter was starting to sit freshman. She drove a lot of teachers through, and we now have energy, we got to do it, so. So we want to see what we can do to get that thing going, we're willing to do it, we're willing to help out, and if we can to get that guy, I know we've got five weeks, and that's not a big window if somebody come in here, but maybe if we can get it going, and on a warm day, they come in and they replace the thing, and we've got to come up here as the Ag Advisory Board, with the students, and move it in into the school on, during Christmas or spring break, that they heard, they put it on, we put them back in there. We just want to keep this going, because Josh has had a lot of success with the Muscat teen school, and if you, if you've heard of it, you've seen the pictures of it, the point he set is that he sold in the winter, the amount of clients he sold in the spring. We want that to teach these kids, but also to help fund some things in the background, because the FFA convention sure sounded like it was an awesome trip. There was some pictures, they had a lot of fun, as they're supposed to do, but as you can see, some of them kids went without coats, and brought old coats, and they thought it was worth their while to go ahead and invest in having the clothing to go back to that next year, so it's, it's exciting times for us. We're very proud of the kids, we're very proud of our instructors, and the Advisory Board, we got a good bunch of people. You see the list, the people that are on it, we've asked Ben Brown, who's a banker, just to oversee in Washington, where the money's going and so forth. Devin Maxwell has headed up, we want this to be a rolling, we don't want to sit on this board forever, we want to bring youth, and we're already talking to the twenty-two and twenty-five and twenty-eight-year-old kids that they give back to us as well for the future, but we want to set the precedent now. We had this Ag Advisory Board a long time ago, it kind of went away, it's time to get it going again, because there's a lot of exciting times. Some of us on the board have reached out to some of the businesses in the area. I've had many conversations with Jeremy Lees, what they're looking for for the future, what they are willing to try to give back. Incubators, putting a room to hatch chickens, putting chickens out there that hatch eggs that they can be selling someplace at the school, give away, they're having an FFA breakfast, they can utilize that. So there's that. I've talked with Brad Mulling down at Kent Research Farm, and he's already starting to dabble at Kent with some people that are going to be talking to Gage in the future about what he wants to see from programs like Willford, and what he wants to see for a facility moving forward that he would help fund. I mean, he gives a dollar, but it's, what do we need? So that, he goes, it's a shame that I got a school that's eight miles away that we can't steal from, I'm not saying he can't, but let's get some of these kids to go through Kent. So we're making these phone calls to see what they want. Rep Spurgeon runs the FFA hog show at the Iowa State Fair, he's from Charles City. We've been emailing him back and forth as well, about what, they just got a brand-new facility. I mean, we're not here to build a new facility today, but we want that in the future, and how do we get that? So that's all I have to say, thank you for your time, we appreciate it, thanks for the support, let's see what we can do to put the roof over this thing, and everything else can be going in.
Well, keep us posted as we move forward, I mean...
Will we respect the phone call, Ian, I don't know? Tim?
If this gets done by February 15th, that would be the best day of my life. It's a challenge, but it's...
It is a challenge, there's no doubt it's a challenge, it's gonna have to be accomplished.
But that's why I'm encouraging us, let's look big picture.
Exactly. We understand it.
That's all I'm saying.
We said if we were doing this in September, we had this in September.
It'd be done.
It may be done.
And I'm trying to dampen enthusiasm, I think it's awesome, but there's a lot, there's a lot if they don't get it the way you want it.
Yeah, yeah, we get it, we get it, because again, there's a lot of energy, thank you for your time, we're grateful.
The pinch on time, though, might work in your favor in that Willford's working on a greenhouse right now, like, most, most people aren't really worried about the greenhouse in February, so it might actually open up later.
You never know, you never, never know. And then maybe, they may have a contractor like a, a little less than a company, and they just solve things and keep it fine.
You can mark the panels on Amazon. First meeting we had that night, we're on Amazon.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Perry.
That was, yeah, that was pretty much all we had.
Oh, boy. Sorry. My wife had warned me, don't say too much.
If you guys have any questions or anything from tonight, or about the road, you have to answer.
So I guess, just, I'm assuming that this then reflects in the master schedule, so that, like...
It's pretty close.
For next year, like, this should be, or actually for next semester?
We're currently teaching.
Right.
So there's nothing on, maybe one class for MCC that we haven't gotten to yet, and so there are maybe one or two classes that we're maybe trying to get in the schedule, but ninety-nine percent of it is all classes are currently teaching. We're planning a stream.
Yeah, some of that will be on MCCs, and just, the time has to be right for the licensing and the signing of paperwork, so.
But, yeah, and the M science course.
I just wanted to take a second and thank you guys so much. First of all, your patience coming into the program, knowing that it was something that needed to be built on. I agree, nothing but good things about you, about the direction you're taking the program, the kids, the community, everybody. I, I just, I'm beyond excited about it. I can't wait to see everything that you guys do and that the kids do, and having them participate in all the steps leading to that, I think is amazing, so, thank you. We're excited to do this.
And to piggyback off that, thank you to the advisory.
Yes, mine too, yes.
I mean, stuff like this, well, this is great, and they're doing an awesome job. It takes parents, it takes the community to step in to help, and thank you guys for doing all that. So, no, great job, thank you.
Thanks, guys. Hey, you wanna talk about your coat and your...
Oh, hold on, I have to, oh, we're not...
As far as our officer team, they were kind of upset, we have a few officers back there upset that they didn't get to wear the polos in their official dress, but local ag businesses, we reached out, so Willfords and Community Bank responded to the check out.
River Valley, Carthago.
And then River Valley, here, is a great office.
Which ain't for everybody who wants one, the ag stores are, the west stores are looking at that.
These are not on the ag, to the officer team, but we do have an extender going, he's anybody wants a polo, jacket, a t-shirt, we reopen that, so, even hats. Exactly.
All right, thanks, Angela.
Hi, Angela, you get to, you get to follow that.
No, it's okay. I don't have too much to point out. Taxation's fund, upload number four. I just need you to look at two funds with me. General fund, I just want to point out that our balance is up, and that is basically just due to the instructional support income surtax. We got about eighty percent of that, we will get the remaining twenty percent from, you'll probably see it in the March meeting, okay? So that is why that fund is up. The other funds, basically the same. I would like to talk about the physical plant and equipment levy fund, fund thirty-six. If you go back and look at my report last month, can you find that one?
No, I can't get one.
Number?
Is it that?
I want a picture.
No.
Or the upload?
Upload four.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
And then you, you'll scroll, scroll through that to the physical plant equipment levy upload.
Just didn't have the number.
So if you look at last month, I have under vehicles and bus, I had $108,000. That is for the Hoagland bus, which you had already okayed. So that bus still is not ready. We thought that it was my last, one of my last communications with Richie was that we were getting that. They had found something wrong and he said, we aren't taking it until you fix it. And I was talking in my head, I can't tell you exactly what that was. But in the meantime, school bus sales had that used bus ready for us. Richie needed it, so that's why I've got that 72.5 in there. Because as soon as that Hoagland bus is ready, school bus sales is going to cut us a check for the $108,000. So that'll be a wash. So that is why I have changed that to the 72.5 because that is what we paid for the used bluebird from school bus sales. Okay? So next month, hopefully, all those, all of those checks will go in the right places and you will see that taken care of, okay? Any questions on that? Okay. Then upload eight, instructional support. I'll just let, this is Austin and this is O'Donnell know. Junior, senior remaining budget is just over $16,000 and elementary, just over nine, okay? And then I'll move on to latch key, upload seven. Ann called me right before break stressing out. She just wanted to make sure everyone knew, keep in mind, December's a short month with the kids gone and being over break and a lot of parents have their little ones at home with them rather than bringing them here. So our revenue expenditure is pretty much a wash for December. So then if you look at upload nine, which is the quarterly comparison, you can see there's quite a bit of a difference in revenue between November and December. And again, that's because of the number of days that she had a full load of kids in latch key. So she's concerned about that, but I said that you are already aware that we're keeping an eye on that. So upload 10 and 11, our nutrition fund uploads and both of those are just fine. Uploads.
Did we, were we able to get the second card swiper or whatever for the concessions then?
Where is that?
No, we have not done that yet.
I didn't go to the concessions yet last night, even though Bo was out there and.
A tax thing, so.
But Bo was on that?
Bo's, what's that?
Bo was aware that we lost that one?
Yes.
I would have told them we could use the $39,000 for it, just to try to find a way to tap into that. But if not, I agree to you, wherever it needs to come from, we need to come from.
Exactly.
I think, I think it's going to have to come from the activity funds being used for activity.
And that's how proactive these are. Use part of the check that we got last night, which was great, brother.
That's a lot of gold. The $39,000 that's, or almost $30,000 is in there. It's like eventually we'll have to do something with it, right? And there is going to be definitely until we have. In the nutrition account. Almost $40,000?
It's over $300,000. What are we looking at? Which upload are you on?
On the nutrition.
Ten.
I was looking at this here, right? I was in the wrong spot.
Right spot's much better.
Yeah, I like it.
I know something changes with the state that allows us to, to spend money on different things.
I said that outside research.
Is that federal or is that state? See, federal, I'm going to say states are sometimes to get, it's federal solvency.
All right, then upload number 12 is our activity, student activity fund. And you're aware of the music, our negative balance there. And then for the canteens this summer and spring, we had our SAM's membership to pay. So that will eventually go away as well. And also, I think I told you the same situation with the elementary local. Okay, so no changes there. Upload 13 is all the student activity vendor report. Any questions on that? Upload 14 is the driving report and the same thing is December. We're just, you know, really busy with our winter sports, with all of, all the activity going on there. So upload 15 is board bills. Which we're light on, on bills this month. Which is, which is a really good thing, we really like that. But I do need to point out, if you scroll to the M's for MCC, that is a big one, $90,500. It used to be that covered both semesters, now that's one semester.
Just because MCC has raised their tuition?
Yes, yes.
And we have a lot of kids that take the current role in academies.
And I was the first class that was able to do that and it was a really big help going into my freshman year of college with whatever, 12 credits or. So if you didn't want to take a full boat, it didn't put you behind, it was a really, really nice.
That's the only way to get more, I don't see it going the other direction.
And then you will scroll on page bottom of 11 to 12. We have paid varsity group for our wall touch. So I think Ryan and Justin and Bo need to get together on that and figure out how that's, you know, all come together.
It's our electronics board work you're talking about, very important.
Yes.
Doesn't that look nice down there in the background?
I didn't even look, I was like.
Okay, because that's what it's going to be on the east wall down by the restrooms, not in the hallway, but down there. It'll go in the center of that.
And then I just wanted to point out on page 13, you'll see the Hoagland bus, the $108,000. So we will just hold that check until we get that same amount from the school bus sales.
And then they provided any kind of an update when they think it'll be?
I don't think so. Throughout this, this whole, but we were supposed to have this bus back in July. And then the last upload I would like you to please look at is 15A. And I had already processed this, cut the check, so I did run a board bill report, but it's for that check. Just school bus sales for that. So I just wanted to put that in there so you could see that we did cut that check. So that's all I have, unless you have any other questions. And, you know, the difference in those two buses was 35.5, so 18.8 I took from there to go towards that van that we just purchased from accident.
Speaking of, maybe I'm off topic and I apologize, if I can't do this, tell me, but Drake ended up getting that other one in. It's sitting on their lot. So I'm assuming they all have predicated on the fact that they thought they were going to sell it to us? I mean, it's not our obligation to do it. I guess my point simply was is they were that hard to find and we're, if we aren't neat enough and it's there, is it something we should be considering?
Our one-time sales tax is healthier vehicle breaker. That's the only reason, because I enjoy it, so I had the same conversation. Because I look at her as a boy, I sure recognize that I have a cycle. But we're one-time sales tax money tied up the way it is. They don't have that kind of money to spend, we just don't in this year's budget. Now you can take it out of general fund, but that's up to the board. We've never purchased vehicles out of the general fund before.